And so if we can just in the interest of time, move on to the next hearing, which is monthly crime stats for the police department. Thank you Commissioner Harrison and your team for being so patient with us. I will turn the floor over to you to start your presentation.
Thank you, Councilman.
Can you give me just a minute? Can I, I just want to make sure we get our slide up. Just give me one minute.
All right, go ahead.
Chairman, did you add me as a presenter?
Yes, you are a presenter.
Go on.
And before we get started, I see the president's on. Mr. President, do you have something that you'd like to say before we get into the slides?
Just very briefly, as you know, as of today, we're up to 209 homicides in the city of Baltimore. No efforts to reduce crime are valiant and that we are seeing gains, but we know that it's still not enough. We know that we're dealing with a lot and a lot, a lot of unforeseen circumstances this year. Want to thank the women and men of the department for working throughout the pandemic. Appreciate their hard work. We know how hard they were each and every day, but just know that we all have to push for us to even see greater gains because we are still having far too much violence in the city of Baltimore. And as we move forward, we all have to come together about rethinking and reimagining and also working more collaboratively of how we can actually see violence reduced and pushing ourselves to be better, pushing ourselves to be more efficient, pushing ourselves to focus more on the things that we know will reduce violence in Baltimore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Harrison, ready when you are.
Couldn't agree more with everything the president said. And to President Scott, Vice President Milton, to you Chairman Schleifer, Vice Chair Burnett, Chairman Costello, Vice Chairman Pinkett and members of the city council. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to present this here. With me today are members of my executive team and command staff. I'll really quickly go through the introductions. Deputy Commissioner for Operations, Michael Sullivan. Deputy Commissioner for Administration, Jim Gills. Deputy Commissioner for Compliance, Daniel Murphy. Deputy Commissioner for Public Integrity, Brian Nato. Colonel Cherie Briscoe, Chief of the Criminal Investigations Division, Colonel Richard Worley, Chief of Patrol Division, Chief of Staff Eric Malonson. Deputy Chief of Staff Andy Smoligan. Chief Financial Officer, Shala Graham. Chief Technology Officer, Woody Davis. Chief of Data Driven Strategies, Drew Vought. Director of Government Affairs, Michelle Wirthsberger. Director of HR, Amy Grover-Harian. Director, Prime Lieutenant, Stephen Odell. Before I begin with my remarks, I'd like to take a moment to honor Sergeant Lewis Hopson, who was just laid to rest last week. Sergeant Hopson dedicated four decades of his life to this department and to this city. We owe our appreciation and gratitude for that lifetime service. Thank you very much. Last month, I issued the year one review of the Baltimore Police Department's five-year crime reduction and improvement plan. This document outlines some of the notable accomplishments that have been achieved in the first year of the implementation of that. While each of you received a copy of this report, I'd like to briefly discuss some of the good work that we've been doing and for the audience at home. We're better managing our resources through a number of things. Number one, we're organizing. We are civilianizing and have civilianized the department by hiring 42 new civilian positions. We have enhanced professionalizing the department by hiring a chief financial officer, chief technology officer, an academic director, and an equity officer for our department. Utilizing our existing resources by returning over 100 officers back to full duty through the creation of the new administrative duties division. These officers were injured in some capacity and through good management practices in the creation of this unit, we put over 100 officers back to work. Reducing our expenditures of overtime by upwards of 30% per pay period. We're modernizing and modernizing and building the department for the future by moving into new facilities for the central district and for our new police academy. Implementing recommendations by the civic innovators program to grow and improve our fleet while also managing it more efficiently. We're updating our woefully outdated technology infrastructure by adding a new records management system, which would take us out of a paper environment into a digital environment. Adding a new workforce management system, which will digitize our payroll. Creating a new E-Tix electronic ticketing software to our patrol. And then having new BPD computers to support a mobile workforce. We're also strengthening our local, state and federal partnerships. We've applied and received over $50 million in new funding from federal, state and private grants. We've been selected as a part of the Department of Justice's Public Safety Partnership that allowed it very heavily for him to participate in the Department of Justice's National Crime Fighting Initiative called Operation Relentless Pursuit. We started regular case reviews with the state's attorney's office to strengthen homicide, non-fatal shootings and armed robbery cases. We partnered with and utilized the talent of our local universities and other institutions to work on several major initiatives. We're making major investments in training and professional development. We're transitioning to a new, more modern training facility. Increasing the staffing of our academy faculty, including the hiring of new civilian legal instructors and curriculum writers. Shortening the academy schedule by eight weeks while also increasing the course load without compromising quality, which allows greater capacity to start more classes and put more recruits on the streets faster. Creating an open, competitive and transparent, fair and equitable promotional process. We have sent commanders to external management programs and brought in experts for internal seminars for professional development. And we're requiring all homicide detectives to receive formal training in both basic and advanced courses in death investigations. We're managing major events with distinction, including mass protests in the wake of the killing of George Floyd, where protesters were able to exercise their First Amendment rights safely and without major incidents in contrast to the demonstrations in many other cities. Continuing operations are uninterrupted through COVID-19 emergency, even as nearly 1,000 of our officers were self-quarantined for various periods of time. We're guiding operations by utilizing data-driven tools and strategies such as launching Baltimore City Intelligence Centers, or BISs, that arm our officers with real-time intelligence and data. Redesigning completely our ComStat to be a more effective management tool and a 360-degree look at command performance on growing lists of metrics. Creating a web application to accompany ComStat to give commanders easy access to the data. Then institute the first-ever response call for emergency calls and then surpassing that goal. We're focusing on officer safety and wellness by decreasing overtime hours and involuntary draft. Conducting fairs and offering physical fitness, mental health and financial planning resources. Training officers to provide peer and emotional support. Training services directly to officers through our mobile wellness program and app. And then conducting weekly stress management sessions. We're creating accountability by reforming the public integrity. Automating creating an early resolution process and increasing staff, all of which has reduced the time it takes to complete complaints by 25%. Initiating an outside independent investigation into GTTS. Implementing a critical incident video release. We're also reforming the BPD through the consent group. I have implemented new use of force in victim-centered sexual assault pilots. Developed new policies on stops, searches and arrests in partial policing as well as behavioral health and crisis intervention. And drafted the department's first-ever community policing. This year has been a busy yet productive year, which has not come without its challenges, including changes in city leadership, a ransomware attack, COVID-19 emergency, mass protests and reform protests, and all allowing a mix of historic levels of violence. With all, we've persevered and managed to realize these many accomplishments, all of which would not be possible without the hard work and fortitude from my command staff, executive team, and most importantly, the minimum of the Baltimore Police Department. Together, we've laid a solid foundation for which we will build upon in order to create a better department. Now, I firmly believe from my previous experience and from my early days in Baltimore that we must fix what's wrong on the inside of this department in order to be better at our response to all of the issues on the outside. That we must also add capacity, which has been lacking, and trust building that has been eroded. We will continue all of this work to forge ahead with even further progress in the upcoming year so that we can, at the end of the day, make Baltimore a safer city. So now that I've talked about what we've already accomplished, let's segue into the public safety hearing to discuss where the city currently stands with respect to crime. We are continuing to see a decrease in every major statistical category of crime and in most categories, a double-digit decline. The last time we met for a council stat hearing, I reported a 17% decline in total Part One crime. Today, total Part One crime is down 27%. That includes a 19% reduction in violent crime. As of Saturday, the 15th, we are 3% down in homicides and 13% down in non-fatal shootings. Please do not take these two particular stats as anything other than a simple recitation of the numbers. I am neither touting nor celebrating these figures. Certainly, we would rather be down than up, but none of us in the command staff find the current situation with shootings and homicides to be acceptable. Not that there's ever an acceptable number. Moreover, we do not forget that those impacted by this violence are not abstract numbers or anonymous statistics, but rather representative of actual individuals and their families and their communities. That's why my team and I remain committed and vigilant as we work towards further reductions. One of the initiatives that we're working on and that you've heard me talk about, speak about, is the group violence reduction strategy. I was part of that implementation of this strategy and had seen its success in New Orleans and has realized success elsewhere in the United States in places like Oakland. The strategy has three objectives. Reduce gun violence by focusing community and law enforcement resources on the highest-risk people and places. Number two, improve life outcomes and reduce recidivism for participants. And number three, build better relationships between the community and law enforcement. To that end, let me tell you where we are currently in implementation of this. We're aligning the Baltimore Community Intelligence Centers and the Gun Crime Intelligence Center to support this strategy. With philanthropic support, we have engaged one of the brainchild of the operation and concept, Dr. Anthony Braga, to provide technical assistance to ensure we're focusing on the right individual. Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice has moved forward with identifying a service partner to engage and fill the gaps with those individuals at highest risk. Now, Colonel Briscoe, who's wanting to point on this initiative, can speak more in detail about the status of implementation of this program. And now that I've given you a broad overview, I'll hand it off to my Deputy Commissioner Sullivan, Colonel Worley and Colonel Briscoe, who will discuss current crime situations in more detail. Thank you.
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Michelle, if you could bring up our slides, please.
Sorry, I was having technical difficulties. There you are.
All right, thank you.
Can everyone see them?
Yeah, we see them.
You go, Michelle.
All right, Chairman, Council President and other council members present. Thank you for letting us be here today. And just like the Commissioner said, we understand as we go through these numbers that each of these numbers represent crime victims and we don't take that lightly and no number is acceptable. As we look at this overall crime chart of what we've seen over this last year, you'll see most of the numbers in the negative. You start at the top with the homicides down 3% and this is, this total crime comparison is through this 815. We were down 3% in homicides, 13% shootings, 36% in rape robbery. Overall was down 29%. You'll see that robbery residence is that one increase that we have there and it's showing a 35% increase. That increase is a result of the beginning of the COVID. We had several pattern of residential robberies that we saw during that time. That number has continued to come down since early May. As we've not seen that pattern continue, we've made an arrest as a result of it. You jump down to aggravated assaults, which you see are reduced at 11%. Larceny totals, 25% down. And we walk down, and I'm not going to walk through each of these numbers, but the total violent crime numbers are down 19%. Total property crime is down 30%. And total Part One crime is down 26%, 26%. Michelle, if you could go to the next slide, please. This is our homicide and shooting data. As we work through this, compared to 2019, only the February and March of 2020 were we actually up in these categories. And you can work through what we saw in the homicides. And once again, I'm not going to read each number for each slide, but you can see what those totals are. And I'll read those totals, 64 for January and that's homicides and shootings combined. 68 for February, 72 for March, 62 for April, 92 for May, 108 for June, 110 for July, and year to, or through the 15th, 53 for August. Michelle, can you go to the next slide, please? This is a comparison of homicide victims by district. You'll see increases that we've seen this year in 2020. We've seen the increases in homicide victims in the central, northwest and the southern. We've seen decreases in the, those other districts, the southeast, eastern, northeast, northern, western and southwest. If you move to the next slide, please. This is a comparison of shooting victims by district, year over year. And you'll see that we have increases in two districts. There's a slight increase in the northern of five victims and a more substantial increase of 22 victims in the southwest district. Otherwise, there's decreases across the other districts represented here. Michelle, if you could go to the next slide, please. Robbery victims across the city, you'll see that there's been a significant reduction in robberies in all districts and it equals up to a decrease over last year of 929 robberies year to date. So we've seen a significant decrease in robberies throughout this year. And then if we can go to the next slide, please, Michelle. Guns submitted to the crime lab, we've had 108 less guns actually submitted to the crime lab. Arrests overall are flat. We've actually had four more arrests when you take our patrol and non-patrol gun arrests into account. So those numbers on gun arrests are rather, they're flat. If you have the next slide, please, narcotics arrests. Overall, you'll see our narcotics arrests are significantly down. At the start of COVID, the state's attorneys had a policy where low-level narcotics prosecutions weren't occurring and were not being pursued, resulting in significant decrease in our misdemeanor drug arrests. They are down approximately 73%. Our felony drug cases are down at a lower level. They're down about 300 cases, which is about 28%. And then, Michelle, you can go to the next slide, please. And this represents our online reporting. Our online reporting has significantly increased and I want to thank every council member that has pushed this in each of your districts. It's been a significant help, especially during this COVID environment and it's something that we don't want to go back on. We want to continue to be able to utilize this, this method to give our officers as much free time as they can to be out there addressing crime. But year-to-date reporting has increased by nearly 38%. And that's, that's a significant increase. We've seen an increase of nearly 450 reports more this year than we did last year. So it's significant, significant increase and it's an increase that we want to see sustained over time. And I'll be more than happy, me and my team, to take questions in a little bit more specificity from any of the council members.
Council President.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you Deputy Commissioner. I'm going to start in particular with a particular district. You were talking about deputy and you know, this is something that I heartburn a lot. You were talking about the southern district. Southern district in Baltimore has a 100% increase in homicides this year, right? That's the place that has seen the significant increase going from 20, we have 26 this year and 13 at that time last year. However, simultaneously, the southern district has a 34% reduction in gun arrests. Can you talk about the nexus that you guys see to that? And also with gun arrests also being flat? Would also like to hear about in the amount of gun arrests that we have, which I believe, let me look in one second, total gun arrests by patrol is 729. We'd really like to hear about how many people that we identified that are violent repeat offenders, ARIs, the most violent of people that we know are committing violence on the streets of Baltimore reflected in that. But really in particular, want to start with the southern district and that big drop in arrests and then big gun arrests in particular, and that big increase in homicides and the violence in the southern district. And want to hear what you guys believe the connection is and what's going on in South Baltimore.
Yeah, we've seen a number of cases where we had some back and forth violence that we saw at the beginning of the year that drove those numbers up and had caused us some challenges. We also had, saw a number of arrests and just interactions with the public drop at the beginning of COVID, particularly in March and April. And those taking two months out of the ability to be able to go address that has given us some challenges. And I'm going to pass Colonel Worley. Do you have anything further on the southern district?
I can address. I'm going to address the gun arrests. Basically, what you got with the gun arrests is you got the southern had the second most last year. So with this year, they're, they're kind of right, right in the middle of the pack, right around 75 for this year. They're number five in the city, but they're battling the top numbers last year. So they, they are still getting the gun arrests. They're not getting that quite the rate that we would like. But as you can see, the homicides and the non-fadals, they don't cancel themselves out. But as you see, the non-fadals are down, homicides are up. And like the deputy said, and I'll let Colonel Briscoe get into it more with the homicides. We had some back and forth over on Hanover Street and we had some issues in Washington Boulevard. The good thing about the gun arrests in the southern is they're getting the gun arrests in quality places. They just got one yesterday in the 1100 block of Washington Boulevard, which is Big Town. Austin and Washington Boulevard, right where we had the two, two, three rounds discharged several months ago, where we had, I think, 30 or some rounds shot off at that time. But they are getting the gun arrests, even though their numbers are down, they're getting them in the right locations. Brooklyn and the tri district and Big Town.
And so just as Deputy Commissioner Sullivan said, there were some cases that, in terms of homicide, that had some connection that we've been able to see. Of the 26 cases in the southern district, 12 of those cases have been closed thus far, which tells you that where we've been able to get some good information, some good intel evidence and community participation, we've been able to have great strides with those cases. So we continue to work to identify where there are connections and any patterns and any things that are common, that we can address those through our casework. So that's what I can tell you specifically about those homicide cases, Council President.
They lead the city in strikes rates at 73%.
And just a follow-up really quickly to both Colonel and Deputy Commissioner Sullivan, just a little pushback, a secondary question. One, we still have to, I want someone to tell me of the, you know, gun arrests, how many of them have been, or do we have, we identified as violent repeat offenders? But also with now COVID-19, my instinct would tell me that we, that our offices would have more time to be proactive due to the increase in online recording. And what I'm expecting is, will be more beneficial to allowing them to have more proactive policing. So with that, I would expect to see, would expect to see even more results, especially in the areas having the violence that we're having in South Baltimore.
So Council President, specifically with our at-risk individual, thus far this year, we've arrested 158 for handgun violation.
So that is 108 or 58, sorry Colonel.
58, sir, that's citywide. And so I'm going to take a pause and get you the numbers specifically for the southern district. You know, that was newer reporting that you've requested. Let me pull that.
Yes, ma'am.
President, I also wanted to mention to you that I recently commissioned an audit of our ARIs because it's been a year and a half since I've been here. And when I came, I learned that we were working from that ARI list, which was probably a couple of years old. So I have recently commissioned an audit. The mayor's office, the innovation team, the mayor's office, their analysts are going to be, if not already, conducting an audit so we can get a better idea. So when we bring Dr. Braga in and they do the problem analysis and we go through who the real repeat offenders are, the methodology by which we arrive at that, you know, we have to agree with Dr. Braga, with our state attorney. All of us have to be on board with how we realize who makes that list. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that our team in the city is conducting an audit through the innovation team to really streamline that list and figure out who really should be on it, who should not.
Thank you. And that was actually my, my next question, Commissioner, was on that note, making sure that we have the best list possible and that we're actually targeting people because they have 158. But 729 arrests means that we, there are a lot of folks that we're missing. Folks that we know we should be, should be removing from neighborhoods that we're not or that we have a list that is outdated and too big. And to that point, my next, my follow-up, unless Colonel Briscoe, unless you have that information, I'll pause for a second.
I'm pulling, I'm still pulling it, sir. I'll follow up as we go along with the meeting.
My, and my, my next question, Mr. Chair, for the Commissioner and his team, is about the work with the gun arrests. So you know, we work very hard to be able to build the ability for them and the state's attorney to work collaboratively around making sure that we're tracking these gun arrests through the process. I know and we've had some cases in recent weeks where unfortunately, people who were the victims or intended victims of violence in Baltimore were people that we arrested with weapons that should have not been back out on the street, wanted to get a update on that of where we are. And if we are yet able to, if you guys are yet able to say how many incidents like that that we're having so that I can be empowered with working with our other partners in public safety and our other partners in even in the legislature and in the judiciary to figure out how we can be better because we cannot continue to have that. When we understand COVID-19 and we understand that we have to look at people that are being imprisoned in a different way. But when you're talking about violence and gun violence in particular, we cannot allow people who we know are traveling with illegal guns and using illegal guns to be back out on the street.
Council President, just to give you an update on where we are in terms of that data. I know we discussed this in our Wednesday meeting. We're still working with the state's attorney's office. Director Vought has met again to get that feed. And we're working also with the state to get that feed, the post-COVID releases. So we do acknowledge and we're aware, just what you said, we're having some challenges with those individuals that we know we've identified that have been participants of violence that have been released. We're getting the information, but we're working to get the data set table that we can further analyze it to provide the information as you're requesting it. And I can also tell you during this season of COVID, it's challenged. Our offices, though we acknowledge it, they're still out working. They have been less proactive as we've been able to kind of go through how to engage in a way that keeps everyone safe, the public as well as our team. So I just wanted to flag that while we're pulling the report for the location for those handgun violations for our at-risk individuals. That's newer reporting that we've been able to pull.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And listen, we want, and you know, I have, anyone, I want them focused. I think that they, we have to be very careful, especially about things that we know are not of a life and death situation. With COVID-19, we can't have people putting themselves or the public at risk. But focusing in on the people and we all know, and Mr. Commissioner, thank you for the work so far with finally getting Baltimore to fully implement a group violence reduction strategy. I know you have my support and the council's full support of us finally doing that and doing it the right way because we know that that system works and that we have to see it through and not abandon it halfway as we've done in the past. I did have a one more question before I turn it back over to the chairman to allow others to ask questions. In reference to, it's a connection between COVID calls for service and cop logic. Have we, how have the calls for service been, the cop logic that we're doing and online reporting and telephone reporting, I think is great. What has that looked at like as far as? What has that looked at like as far as response times? And how, how much more can we do with online reporting and telephone reporting that would allow us to finally have patrol officers in Baltimore with the time to be proactive?
Yeah, Council President, the, we can continue to do what we're doing. And what we've seen is we've seen calls for service go back to normal levels here in the last month. With those normal levels of calls for service, we've continued to see the cop logic or online reporting still to be utilized at the level it was being utilized before, which is an increase of nearly forty percent of what it was being utilized for last year. You know, I think there's opportunity, always opportunities to increase. It's with public awareness, and I would ask the other council people to push out information to use this technology to be able to make those reporting and put that reporting out there. What I would tell you also during COVID, while we, we've seen some proactive changes in the way we police, we've seen significant increases in business checks, we've seen significant increases in foot patrols by our officers in different areas. We were out enforcing governor's orders and the mayor's orders as a result of this COVID environment. And on top of that, we, during the protest environment that we saw, we had significant amounts of our folks for several weeks that were pulled offline to be able to do that. I certainly think that there's opportunities to increase it, but maintaining the level that we have and not going back is one thing that we want to make.
And Council President, I just wanted to give you the...
Pause that one second. There we go. Thank you. Did you get it, Colonel? You're good.
Yes, sir. So for the Southern District, the at-risk individuals, those handgun violations, there were fifteen.
Fifteen out of how many total in the Southern?
I'm sorry? So fifteen out of seventy-five.
Okay. And Deputy Commissioner, we broke up at the end because we have some feedback. Sorry about that. Could you repeat the end of what you're saying?
I was just saying, we were committed to not going back on the increases, increases we've made on this online reporting. And we absolutely do want to increase it and look for other ways to leverage it so our officers have more time to go out there and engage in engaging the community and proactive policing and having those community contacts and community engagement to build trust and reduce crime.
Yeah, thank you. And I would just push a little bit in figuring out, I think that we need to set goals, right? I think that we're close to, close to two thousand reports. I know when I checked a few years ago, that Charlotte, for example, was doing ten thousand a year. And I'm even looking at some of the categories where I know we could be taking a lot of, you know, we can be pushing a lot more than, I'm looking at larceny from auto, for example. I think that we need to set goals on how we're going to be educating and where we should be as far as online reporting and telephone reporting, which I know we don't have TRU statistics in front of us today. But I think that that would set a timeframe and a reason and a way for us to hold you guys accountable for that and a way for us to all hold ourselves accountable for where we're going in the future. And then also Deputy Commissioner, just a follow-up, have we, do you guys have information right now that you can give to us about how response times have been during COVID?
I don't have any response times, but we'll get that to you after this hearing. But the response times have continued to be good during, during COVID. We haven't seen any issues, even though we have had, have had some disruptions in our personnel with people being off and having to be quarantined during this period. So, and one thing I would just say about, as we do the online reporting, we just have to be careful on like the larceny from autos, for example. We really want to get that reporting timely, if at all possible, so we can interdict if we know something is going on. So being able to balance the online reporting and still getting that information to patrol officers so that they can interdict crimes as they occur is a challenge that we're going to go forward. But certainly, we were not opposed to setting those goals and pushing our folks towards those goals to have even more online reporting. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. And if we need to work that into communications and make sure that the information getting out timely, we will make sure that we do that. I'm done for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Commissioner, first, I want to thank you and your team for your assistance during the explosion that occurred in my district. Your team was on site from minutes after it happened, all the way through, really even, you know, yesterday and today. And so I just want to thank your team for that. They didn't just do what they needed to do, they also went above and beyond to help some of the officers that were out there, and I'm happy to share individual names. They just went above and beyond when people were having issues, no matter what it was, whether it was carrying bags, anything you can think of, they really stepped up. And so thank you and your team for that. And Colonel Worley, who also made sure that we had all the stuff that we needed out there. And so that was very appreciated and helpful. So thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of, I got a couple of questions. I got more than a couple of questions, but I'll just ask two in the interest of giving everybody on the committee an opportunity to go through and ask questions. So as part of, as part of this crime plan, and I'm pleased to see the, I'm pleased to see the actions being taken by your team to implement it. One of the things which I'm not sure you guys are up to yet, deals a lot with the community-based program. And so in light of recent news where, you know, there was an incident with a member of Safe Streets, I know that you have been doing extensive work to make sure that you're, you know, you're putting controls in place to prevent bad actors from committing crimes and doing other things. And so I wanted to know if, being that it's in your crime plan and it is funded by the city, is, are some of those best practices being shared with that, with the mayor's office of criminal justice? And if so, if you can just elaborate on them?
Yeah, I recently, thank you for that. I recently asked for a meeting and participated in it with the mayor's office of criminal justice and the leadership from Safe Streets program. And it was just a couple of months ago, we had that meeting in my office, a few months ago, we had that meeting in my office because I had concerns about the flow of information, our intelligence that either we have that they need or intelligence they have that we need in order to be able to prevent retaliatory acts and bad actions that are retaliatory in nature. We had that meeting. When I first came on over a year ago, under different leadership, I had a meeting with the leadership of Safe Streets, because I wanted to make sure that although the model calls for a separation between Safe Streets and police, there still need to be, still need to be coordination between their efforts and ours to set performance metrics so that we can know what's working and what is not. There are interventions on their part we need to know so that we can at least know what's working and have some performance metrics. Not that we want it to actually control them or coordinate their efforts, but to know what's working so that we can create strategies to improve it if needs improve. Certainly, the most recent incident brings about some concern for all of us, but my suggestion is to always, not just to the mayor's office of criminal justice, but to even our own department, that we look to make sure that if we're modeling programs that are national-based programs, that we find the ones that work well, we find what those protocols are that allow them to work well, and then we do our best to implement those protocols, those policies and protocols here, so that we can prevent those bad actions happening. And when they do, we can respond appropriately.
Thank you. And my second question also deals with, with community involvement as far as, as far as the crime plan and crime fight is concerned. Another piece of that is the CRCs that reside in each one of the nine districts. If you can give us an update on any actions that have been taken as far as implementing any processes or protocols regarding those, to make sure that they are being inclusive and also that they are benefiting the community police relationships. I know, you know, my district oversees in the Northwest as well as the Northern, as you're aware. I've gotten many complaints from the Northwest about a lack of inclusion and just different discriminatory practices that are being deployed by community volunteers who are involved in that. So I want to know what kind of oversight the police department provides in those, in those meetings? And is there anything being done as far as to make sure that the goals for what these councils were set up to do is actually doing that and not the opposite?
Well, yes, I meet monthly with the presidents of each district, and we were scheduled to meet yesterday. And we rescheduled because I had another conflict, and that's probably a week away. And in those meetings, we talk about those conflicts that exist, either between them and other neighborhood association presidents or other organizations or community leaders. But what we're doing is to, we want to redesign how our command staff holds and attends community meetings so that there's not conflict and there's a flow of information to the department by members of the community and a flow of information to the community by the police department as to what we're doing, what we need and how we collaboratively work together to improve lives in our districts. So we meet monthly, and the controls we're putting are basically on the police department's auto. I don't have much control over the design of the CRC program, but I do hear their complaints and that almost just what you're saying, there's some complaints about a lack of coordination between community associations and community leaders in regards to the goals and missions and objectives of the CRCs. So we're working to put controls in place, at least on behalf of the police department to minimize that.
Right, so it would be nice to have some type of uniform, you know, uniform bylaws so that there is that consistency across all nine police districts, because if the groups are not helping build police and community relations, then they're simply not, they're not CRCs.
Well, I think, I think there, all of us, and all of us, including, including them, are eager to improve police-community relations and work hard at improving police-community relations. But we're creating guidelines for the police department, but I just cannot compel people outside the police department to comply with that. But it needs to be, you're right, and I agree, we need to have guidelines and bylaws. But we have to have everybody agree to that. Those are the things that we've been talking about for months that are in works as we speak.
All right, so I won't put you on the spot for a timeline on that, but there is something that I would like to follow up on, on like a timeline that we can set forth for when some of those processes and bylaws can be put in place. I'll move on to other members of the committee. Councilwoman Snead, do you have some, any questions? Councilwoman Snead, do you have any questions? Okay, Councilwoman McCray?
No, no.
Sorry, Councilwoman McCray, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Burnett, Vice Chair of the committee, do you have any questions?
I do. And actually, I had sent mine ahead of the hearing to Michelle Worsberger.
Appreciate that, sir.
So one, just want to echo the concerns that have been raised already about the crime rates, especially in the Southwest District. But I have had several conversations with both district commander and Lieutenant Colonel Worley and others about what's going on in the Southwest, and I will continue that communication. But one of the things I wanted to pivot to a little bit, have some concerns about just, you know, in a pandemic, we've heard this from the school system, but just concerns about missing persons, child abuse, especially with everyone being locked up in a home and social distancing. We had questions about, about that that were sent ahead. Michelle, I don't know if you want me to walk through each one of them, or if you had part of the presentation prepared related to questions to the CID, Missing Persons Unit, Child Abuse, Sex Offense Unit and Internet Crimes?
Sir, we are prepared to answer your questions. You should take them one, one at a time, and we will respond to them.
Okay. Mr. Chair, it was a, it was a number of them. Do you want me to sort of hit the key ones? I sent them about six or seven questions ahead of the hearing.
Since you're the vice chair, how about we give you a fifty percent bonus and you start with the first three, and then we'll come back and you do the next three.
That works. That works. And I'll lump them together. So first question was, well, the first three, and I'll just walk through them that way. They should have them in this order. How many officers assigned are assigned to specialized CID units? Please include the number that are injured or suspended. And then I guess that's two questions. And the third one was, how many officers are assigned to missing persons and really in relation to best practices more specifically?
Thank you, Councilman. Let me just walk through the CID. The total CID number is two-hundred-and-forty-two. Of the two-hundred-and-forty-two, two-hundred-and-twenty-three are full duty. That includes nineteen that are either injured or suspended in CID at this time. And I'm going to pass it over to Colonel Briscoe to talk about the numbers in each of these areas. But what I would like to say about best practices is there is not necessarily a best practice, but what I can tell you is we have a staffing plan that has been approved by the court as a part of the consent decree, which is a plan of what we need to staff to. And I would aim to that as being our best practice, where we are headed and where we need to get to. So with that, I'll pass it off to Colonel Briscoe to talk about the details of each unit within her command.
Good evening, Councilman. Thank you so much for your questions. So you asked specifically about the number of detectives in Sex Offense Unit, and that is twelve. And so you can, if you'd like to stop me and ask a question, or I can roll right through. All right, so twelve for sex offense, sir. For our arson unit, there are four detectives. For our child abuse unit, there are six detectives. Missing persons, sir, there are three detectives. And our ICAC detective, there's one. And our family crime detective, there's seven. And animal abuse, there's one. Councilmember Burnett, do you want me to?
Yeah, and I guess the follow-up I had for, for that, sorry, I was having, I've been having tech issues all morning. The cases, well, you don't have to walk through cases per detective for each of these, but I'm specifically most interested in the number of cases per officer in your, that are assigned to child abuse or slash sex offenses and missing, missing persons.
So in all of, in 2019, for child abuse, there were two-hundred-and-nineteen cases that we investigated, and that's roughly thirty-seven cases per detective. For missing persons, there were two-hundred-and-eighty-four cases in all of 2019, and that's ninety-four cases per detective.
How many, sorry, how many for the year, missing persons?
So I'm walking you through what, what, all we had in 2019 in response to give you.
Yeah, I just, I just missed, I heard ninety-four cases per.
Yes, sir. Two-hundred-and-eighty-four, sir.
Two-eighty-four, okay.
Ninety-four cases per. Yes, sir. For sex offense, a hundred-and-eighty-eight cases, and there were twenty-three cases per detective. And just as Deputy Commissioner Sullivan stated, there are many instances, I know you asked about best practices, there have been many studies that are out that give you an understanding of what is most prudent based on the type of investigation, but best practices doesn't exist for every one of those categories. So I just wanted to give that question some context.
Okay. I'll stop there, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Next up, Councilman, thank it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question is, I think it was stated earlier that the decrease in the narcotics arrests was related to the state's attorney's policy to not prosecute drug charges. I guess first, is that policy still in place?
Yeah, that's, that's, that policy is still in place. And because of, because of that, we had to make adjustments on how officers and detectives are engaging individuals on the street. First of all, because of COVID, not necessarily, it's a combination. It was because of COVID, I don't know what about that policy changed, but it was really because of COVID, we had to make adjustments on how and when and with whom to engage to protect this, the resident from exposure to us and protect our officers from exposure to residents with regard to COVID. That policy change made us have to really adjust deployment strategies and proactive policing. Number one, to protect our officers and to protect the residents from COVID, but to make sure we're not arresting people that are not going to be allowed inside of the jail and the lockup facility. So there were a number of adjustments that we had to make while we still, while we still investigate and still make. investigate and still make arrests for distribution cases and felony cases, which are distribution cases. The simple possession and possession of misdemeanor possession cases were because they weren't being prosecuted and because of the the risk associated with close, that closing counter back in early March and April, uh, we had to really create some protocols to protect not just the resident but the officer. So there was a a drastic decrease then. It has somewhat picked up, but uh because of those two factors, there's a drastic decrease in the amount of misdemeanor drug cases. There are still some drug cases being made.
So so distribution um charges are still being made, or?
Distribution cases, if we make them, are still being prosecuted. And so, yes, we have officers, some detectives and officers who work and investigate to make distribution cases. There are not nearly as many as uh the the simple possession cases or the misdemeanor possession cases. Uh, it takes a lot more work and investigation and coordination, much more time involved in in trying to figure out how to make those distribution cases, though we still make some of them. Uh, but the the misdemeanor possession cases uh have significantly dropped off, and what you saw is the early directions from the CDC about engagement, and then we created more protocols first with the engagement because of COVID. The second set of protocols were because of the the change in policy about prosecuting this case. And there were a number of other cases also, along with misdemeanor cases that fall into that category of not being prosecuted. We had to create protocols and give instructions to the officers about how to engage, when to engage, and if the officer felt the need to make an arrest on a on a drug case, in spite of the fact that there's a COVID issue and that the state's attorney was not going to prosecute it, it required the permission and authority of a lieutenant or a to grant permission to make that arrest because we had to give justification because of the the protocols we put in place.
Um, and so when do we anticipate um those policies, I guess, changing related to distribution cases?
As far as I know, in my conversation with the state's attorney, their office is still prosecuting federal distribution, I mean, not federal, felony distribution cases. And so that policy is not going to change, uh, to to my knowledge.
So so what, so I'm I'm sorry, I just maybe I'm not understood. So what's what's the level or difference between a felony distribution case and a misdemeanor?
Distribution of narcotics is a felony, because simple possession of it is not.
Okay, because and the reason I'm saying is that, and and I can't speak for the rest of the city, but I know West Baltimore, um, the residents feel like they're under, um, they're they're under siege as it relates to the drug dealing, um, open air drug dealing that's happening in so many sections of West Baltimore. And you know, what we continue to hear is that because the distribution cases aren't um being prosecuted or charges being um placed, that um there's not that same level of engagement between law enforcement and and the drug dealers. And I'm just trying to figure out when will the residents of West Baltimore get some relief?
Well, I heard you say distribution. The distribution cases have always been uh cases that that the state's attorney said they would prosecute. Uh, to my knowledge, it's not been any change. It's only been possession cases, but we went through a period of of having to teach our officers and teach ourselves how to engage without without infecting ourselves, and when we found that officers were being infected, we were having to disinfect the vehicles, disinfect the the entire stations and workplaces within the station. And so we went through a period of figuring out how to engage, even though we we were getting bombarded, I'm certain like all of you, with complaints of open air drug markets and drug dealing. So the officers are still engaged, but we had to, we had to learn how to engage without exposing ourselves and running the risk of becoming infected with COVID, and even to some degree, we did. And, you know, we've had a number of officers to become infected, and we had to shut two police stations down temporarily for disinfection and disinfect hundreds of police cars when that happened. And so I I think as time progresses and there's vaccinations and we go back to some sense of normalcy, you can, you will begin to see police um more engaging and more hands-on, uh, in a constitutional way, that is, more hands-on when it comes to open air drug markets and confronting people who are out there. Uh, we still do that when we see them breaking the law. We're just not making arrests for possession cases, only the distribution.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Chair, my second question is related to um the gun arrest. And um so when I was looking at the slide presentation, it looks like um we we um present for processing about 150 guns a month, five guns a day, um, almost 100 gun arrests a month, um, about three gun arrests a day. Over the past four years, it looks like we've had, we've um confiscated anywhere between 6,000 to 7,000 guns off the street. Um, I'm usually a hopeful person, but I'm trying to figure out if this is, if gun arrests are the way for us to make our streets safe, I don't even know how that's possible. I mean, it looks as though we are, you know, even in bad times, we are making arrests, we are confiscating guns, but there are more guns out on the street than we can possibly pull off. And so I I want to hear more about the gun traffickers, the the guns that are getting into our community, what what's happening on that front? Because getting these individual guns one at a time, two at a time, doesn't seem like it's going to get us to the end.
Mr. Chair, can I chime in too on this?
Yes, sir.
And thank you, and thank you, Mr. Councilman, and and thank you, good that, I I'm just going to chime in because that was where I was going next, and I know I talked a lot with the commission and the team about this because I think uh Councilman Pinkett, there's two things. As I was pointing out earlier, uh, not every gun arrest is equal, right? We we know that that we have to be removing people that we know are using those weapons. We know who the the killers are. We know who the shooters are. We have to be focused on them, but as I said time and time again, we also have to have a deep strategy on how we're actually going to deal with these folks who are selling hundreds of guns onto the streets of Baltimore that are coming from, you know, locally here in Maryland, but also all around of the country. And one to really, that's something that's going to be a real focus for us as we move forward. We'd love to hear about how we think we can do that because we have to do both. We have to remove the wolf from the street and we have to stop the people who are allowing them to eat at the same time.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think I agree with both of you. Uh, all of us agree with that. Uh, I will say, Councilman Pinkett, that uh the missing element is our ability to improve the life outcome of the young men who are committing the crime and to provide the alternative to crime. And so while we look at the young men carrying the guns and we look at, yeah, we do look at, and we have a whole federal agency that looks at people who bring guns into this city and to every city. Um, we have to look at how we change the culture of why they even carry the gun in the very first place and and provide them with a pathway away. That's what focus determines is all about. And and because it provides a lifeline and a pathway away, and it incentivizes them to put the guns down because there is an alternative. And that's been the missing element in in my professional opinion for for so many years, which is what we're aiming to build here in Baltimore. Uh, and so there there is hope, it's just that we have to add the missing component, which is not just enforcement, which is how do we change the culture and change their reasons for having to carry the gun in the very first place?
No, I totally agree with you. Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one other question when you come back around.
Mr. Mr. Chair, put Mr. Commissioner uh just a follow-up on that because, you know, moving forward, that providing those opportunities is going to be a focus as we move forward, but want to hear from you, uh, how you think that that relationship can be improved? We actually in uh right before you arrived to Baltimore, we heard from the now former Special Agent in Charge, uh, who was Agent Cicada at the time, that there needed to be a more deep focus on traffickers and straw purchases, and there needed to be more coordination and even uh uh more stricter penalties for those who are doing that. We've been leading that work here. We passed a law at the council to make gun traffickers, uh, members of the the gun offender registry. We worked with our state partners, making a felony on a state level, but can you talk about what kind of coordination is needed from a strictly law enforcement uh standpoint to improve and have a deeper focus on it?
Well, uh, thank you for that. It's the kind of coordination that you see us working to build right now, where we have these gun crime intelligence centers, we're working with the Baltimore Community Intelligence Centers, bringing on high-level analysts to be on the ground, working side by side with patrol officers and detectives in the district, providing analytical uh intelligence in real time, who are connected to our federal partners and a a number of Baltimore City detectives who are working at ATF to support the federal mandate of gun, of enforcing gun trafficking and straw purchases. All that work is is being done, but there needs to be a better coordination of bringing that into the city. So the city, the city knows about guns that are coming in, but it really is a federal crime, and we prosecute those crimes in federal court by and large when we know that they happen. And we have dedicated officers assigned to ATF to do that work with ATF agents uh on a consistent basis. Uh, we have uh this federal task force, uh, strike force rather, that's coming online. It's already doing the work, but built a facility here in the city where we're all be working together, Baltimore Police, surrounding agencies, and all of our federal and state partners working inside one building. That's a level of coordination that we haven't yet seen. While we do the work, we're all working in our own venues and sometimes inside, but when the strike force is co-located in one facility, you're going to see even more collaboration, coordination, and communication.
And Commissioner Harrison and Council President, if I can add to that a little bit, with our crime gun intelligence centers, we are are working now to get some additional training to our uh line force in specific parts of town, so we're kind of working through that with our ATF partners to identify, you know, with our NIBIN leads, to just further exploit that technology and that information that we're working through intelligence to make sure we're identifying not just the uh end user, but it from birth, uh, from, you know, the cradle to the grave in terms of a weapon and its use and how it's participated in the violence that we're seeing in the city. Um, I know you had a specific question about uh traffickers and the bill that you passed, and I'll have Lieutenant Colonel Herzog speak to some of the points of what in terms of data, what we're seeing, where with that, where that's concerned so far.
Yes, sir. So it's kind of, you know, along the basic line, I can give you the numbers because, you know, and we've had this conversation in the past as far as the county breakdowns of where the guns that we're seizing um in Baltimore are coming from. So if you want those numbers specifically, I can send it over to you as a follow-up, or I can go over them county by county now if you would like.
You can go through it now.
Okay, so um year to date, um, we've recovered four guns from Allegheny County, 14 guns from Anna Rundle County, 42 from Baltimore County, 90 that generated from Baltimore uh, four from Carroll County, five from Cecil County, one from Charles County, two from Frederick County, four from Hartford, nine from Howard, one from Montgomery, nine from Prince George's, and one from St. Mary's County.
And how many from outside of Maryland?
So from outside of Maryland, um, there's a, and I can give and send you the total number, I have the breakdown by state, which, you know, it it could be timely unless you want me to go through all of them as well.
Yeah, give me the total number, you can send me the state breakdown later.
Okay, um, the grand total for that is 127 have been traced out of state. Now, I just want to preface that as well, so we're still going back at this point. Um, our gun analysis coordinator um was out on COVID, so she is still getting caught up on this, so this number is going to be updated, uh, but it's all the most accurate numbers that we have right now based on trace and all and also our Maryland gun data um up till the 17th.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for that, Colonel, and uh for just a quick follow-up for that, Colonel, if you can send that all the information to me later on, that would be greatly appreciated. And then uh just a quick follow-up, it's my understanding that we're seeing now some of the guns even used in that we get from our NIBIN, NIBIN leads that actually the councils, is something that we pushed to force to have a gun crime intelligence center back in 2017, have been connected to incidents in violence in other states. Can you talk about the, not just the federal partnership, but the partnership with the other uh local uh police departments when it comes to these kind of cases and connections?
So we have um uh regional partnerships and and throughout the state, so we're sharing that data and information. So when we're having, uh, when we put our leads in, our strings in, they're able to see it. So we have cases that we've worked uh specifically with Baltimore County, um, Prince George's County, that connect to violence that we may be seeing in our homicides or non-fatal shootings that may go to a discharging or robbery. So we'll start to collaborate to evaluate who's been involved in those crimes in their jurisdictions and 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 literally collapse the borders and work together. So we are seeing that happen um with our detectives.
Thank you, and we're doing the same if we see some out-of-state connections as well, right?
Absolutely, sir. We're reaching across the borders, yes, sir, of the state.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, um, and your team uh for all of your work amidst the challenge of this pandemic. Um, I wanted to ask briefly, and I had said this in the uh to Michelle Worsberger before this hearing, but just wanted to ask quickly about what we are doing to proactively reduce intimate partner violence. We know that during pandemics, we tend to see spikes in this crime and simultaneously we see underreporting, and that's something I'm hearing from constituents is that um that they are seeing and experiencing a rise in intimate partner violence and uh that reporting is less so, largely because people are afraid, um, if they live with their abuser, um, of uh potentially, um, you know, having someone become homeless during the pandemic or, um, you know, having their abuser commit further violence against them. So just wanted to ask specifically about that crime.
So thank you for that question, Councilman Cohen. Um, I know we've talked about this uh before in one of our Wednesday conversations, so I prefaced this statement by saying, though the number is low, we acknowledge the challenge, and we're doing our part to work with our partners and our relationships to be able to combat that very thing in which you said, as in the abuse behind the walls, um, and the the inability at times for the victim to speak out. So we're working with our partners. So fa- family crimes and patrol, um, that deals with inter intimate partner violence, our job, of course, is to investigate, to seek protection for the victim, to offer advocacy services, because we do have in-house advocates that support the work, and to be able to censor the criminal behavior and deter future violence. We use relationships that are um private relationships and partnerships as well as governmental ones. So we still have our relationship with the House of Roof, with Turnaround, the Court Commissioners, the State Attorney's Office, Department of of Juvenile Services, our BCC Team, our Baltimore Child Abuse Center, Witness Relocation, and our Verizon Hope Line, our Department of Housing, and a a few others, and that's just to name a few. Um, as you recall, during the pandemic, we sent some information out to the public, and we continue to do so interdepartmentally and externally. We use the JIC, when we had the JIC set up, to be able to convey that communication to the public and that message. And I and I'm sure you've uh noticed in recent months, especially during um our COVID crisis, the outpour for um family supports as well as mental health supports surrounding these crimes, and that is as a direct result of our effort to try to curb what we know to be low reporting out of fear. House of Roof and its services and our partners are still on the ground and working, um, as are we in terms of the Baltimore Police Department, but we, of course, need everyone's support, and that includes yours. So thank you for all that you've been doing to help us get that message out um as a council, and we'll continue to push on in in that vein.
Thank you. Um, again, just, uh, I would completely reemphasize that uh this type of crime we know is being underreported, and so leaning as much as you can on partnerships, I think, is critically important. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and um to all the officers here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, I'm gonna go to the list and see any other council people who have any questions. Uh, next one on the list over here is Councilman Costello. Councilman Costello, you have any questions? I see your screen. Um, okay, we'll come back to him. Let's see, here we go, who else? All right, Councilwoman Middleton, do you have any questions? Councilwoman, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
One question and just one statement, and I want to thank um you Commissioner and also the the team at Northern and Northwestern for um, you know, the things you continue to do, especially in the residential areas, uh particularly uh with Northern Police uh at the um Roland Patterson School that is now the temporary, a temporary homeless shelter for men. Uh Northern has been continually working in that route just to make sure things uh stay calm in that area, and I appreciate that. Um I um I did have some questions about guns, but that seemed to have been answered. But I do just want to bring up a issue that I have been noticing, particularly in the Northwest area, and that's the abundance of these tagless cars that have been just going over. And I'm talking like fifteen, twenty cars in like a three, four block radius, and they set up like auto repair shops and they work on these cars. And I I had a constituent that um actually had to take a video and ride in his truck and actually show all the cars that are tagless. And and this is like Chelsea Terrace, all up in that area off of uh Garrison. And um then there's some areas on off of Rice's Town Road near um Towanda Rec Center. Those are just a couple, but I've been noticing a lot of tagless cars just spread out in neighborhoods, sitting there. And, you know, the neighbors are complaining because they're like right in front of their their homes. So I don't know if this is something new that, you know, what are in those cars? What are uh, you know, they need to be taken off the street. I know that um, you know, some have put like the uh they they tagged them for the forty-eight hour thing, but this abundance is just so, it's suspicious to me. Uh have have you noticed that or is there anything that?
I I have seen some neighborhoods with tagless cars, but not not anything like you're describing that would cause me to think that there's some nefarious thing going on in one particular area because it's just spread out across the city as I drive around. Uh I think the residents should in 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 that particular district, it it's not a 911 call, but it is a call to perhaps the NCOs in that district are bringing attention of the commander so that they can look into it and and find out if there is something, some criminal activity there or to to work and partner with city services to have them removed. Uh so I think it's certainly worth a conversation with you and your district commander uh because that's a, you know, to me, that's a low hanging fruit that can easily be fixed.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I have seen uh similar stuff um in the Northwest as well with uh these shops being just popping up and working on cars. Um I've had great success working with um with uh permitting and zoning on the some of those issues. Um so I know Jason Hessler has been working on a lot of that as well. That also might be a good avenue. Um I will go back to Councilman Costello to see if uh you have any questions. Councilman? All right, we'll go around to the next round. Um Council President Scott?
Thank you. Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh Mr. Commissioner, just want to to get a update uh on the 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 surveillance plane pilot to see where the pilot is and how successful it's been.
Okay, thank you for that. Um we are approaching a midterm report. Uh our uh, you know, we 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 partnered with a number of academic institutions and and partners to do a number of things. Uh they're gathering data. What we can tell you is that there have been, I believe, ninety-three and ninety-three, ninety-five investigated packets that were created uh by the vendor for detectives to investigate. And but what I'd like to do is I promised the citizens that our 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 research partners would present out on that. And I think we're probably somewhere about a week or two away from our research partners producing a midterm report because we're halfway through the the pilot program. Uh and of those ninety-five packets, I know that there have been some success, but uh the research partners have to vet that and vet how successful and what level of success we're having with each one of them to give a a really good picture. So what I'd like to do if possible is come back to you and the council with a midterm report of how the program is going halfway through the pilot.
Okay, but can you can you speak to how many of those packets have led to like arrests? I know you said publicly like one or two a few weeks ago.
There were, there were two, two that I knew of when I spoke in a press conference uh about a month ago or a few weeks ago. Uh there have been more, but uh it's unvetted. We have not had our research partners to vet that and the validity of that and what percentage of the plane actually led to closures. And while I knew of those two that particular week, uh you know, in talking with the Rand Corporation, they are prepared to do a mid-pilot report to talk about the efficacy of the program and where we are to break all of those numbers down. And we will be very happy to just have a full conversation about that and do a full presentation about that to let you know where we are midterm. What I can say is of all of the activity, there have been ninety-five investigative packets created that have been put into the hands of of detectives.
Thank you, and we'll look forward to that to that follow up. My my next one was around uh like the impact of the decrease uh in in crime, but also COVID around to deployment. And there's been opportunities to adjust deployment and how successful we've been, how more focused we can we can we can be. And and also really thinking about the zones that we identified. Do we still think that having that amount of zones is right or should we contract that? And and what impact has not just the reduction, but COVID also had on the department's ability to institute uh some of the community policing strategies that that we all want to see implemented?
Well, from two great questions. Uh yes, we've had some impact and we've had to make adjustments because of COVID. We do not believe that we should readjust the the data that supports that the microzones are where violent crime, mainly murder shooters and 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 all murders have occurred historically over the five-year period. The data still supports that those are the the most impacted areas. And certainly, you know, we're focusing on on people who are driving crime in those areas. Uh that's number one. So we think that the data still supports that those are the areas and we're seeing both deterrence and displacement in those microzone areas. Now, it's been, it's been affected somewhere else, but we're seeing some level of decreases, both due to deployment strategy and to COVID because even though there's a decrease in engagement, it's led to a decrease in drug arrests, there has not been a decrease per se in gun arrests, which means that there's still high levels of engagement. And so I I don't want anybody to think that we have cut off our proactive enforcement. It is still there by virtual effect. We're still bringing in guns and and finding people who are illegally carrying guns. So the officers are 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 doing that as safely as possible. But the second answer to the second question is yes, there has been dramatic impact because of COVID and the way we have community engagement. Uh and we have, though we we do virtual meetings, we have not been able to do community meetings the way we did them five months ago. And we have not been able to be uh face to face with community members who are practicing social distancing, who are by and large staying in and not coming to the station, but we're not meeting in other locations as well. So the officers are doing this, are are producing the same outputs like business checks, community engagement, foot patrols. We're still doing that, uh but we're not participating in the more organized, the more organized and coordinated community engagement that we saw in January and February before COVID hit, when we had mass gatherings and we can discuss face to face with issues of the community or create strategies to overcome
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that. And my my last question, Mr. Commissioner, for right now is just a simple one. Just want to to talk about um what what uh you are taking and where you are with the consent decree based on the last meeting and what the update is.
Um we had our, a few weeks ago, we had our orderly uh orderly public hearing in in front of Judge Perdor. We are um making good progress, though we realize we have a long way to go. Um we have overhauled and and rewritten uh the majority of our major policies, especially like use of force, stop searches and arrest, sexual assaults, and uh the the court seems pleased with the department's capacity it built to bring the department into compliance and to bring the and to make the department implement this consent decree. And though we're not there yet, we have uh we've shown that we lacked the capacity in the beginning, but we've now built the capacity. We've built leadership teams and uh the court seems pleased with the progress, although there are are, you know, still many things to do. We have a, we still have a uh early intervention system to to build. We still have a number of big ticket items to to overcome. Uh what we can tell the public is that the Department of Justice, the mountain team and the judge all seem pleased with the progress of where we are and how far we've come in such a short time.
Goodness, President.
Yeah, thank you. No, actually, I I did just want to follow up on one more. This is something that I I've spoken with you about too. Uh while we know the districts that are having the problems and we talked about those and we know we need to be focused there, the one thing that that I I remain uh in addition to the homicide shootings, robberies in particulars, I still remain very concerned about um home invasions, uh especially with what we know is an impending second wave of COVID that we all expect and and something that we know is very terrifying and we've seen too much of. And just want to make sure that we are are trying to prepare for that in case that we see the kind of uh things that we saw in the early winter and spring.
Yes, sir. We talk about that all the time, especially in our concept meetings and our crime crime strategy meetings. I'll let either the Deputy Commissioner or Colonel World at Westfield jump in because that's been a point of concern early on in COVID and and remains even till today.
No, absolutely, uh Council President. We uh will continue to watch those residential robberies. They've dropped significantly since May, the first week of May. Uh I think at one point we were in the high sixty percent over uh for the year, a- and those came up very quickly in March, April. Uh so we had a a couple different patterns that we were able to put down. And with those arrests, uh that uh went away, but we'll continue to monitor that. We'll continue to uh put out uh information and and ask that uh council members put out information i- if we see any trends or spikes as we go into the fall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We talk about it every day on the conference call. As a matter of fact, you probably already know about the one in Northeast yesterday with the kids, with the kids taken. But we knew they were kids because he took a PlayStation and something else the kids play with. So it was teenagers that went in and robbed teenagers. So we we talk about it every day to stay on top of it, to make sure we get ahead of any patterns.
Thank you. Thank you. And and this lastly, we don't have any pending robbery or carjacking or any patterns around that as of right now, do we?
No, that one that we talked about on the initial call is kind of gone away.
Okay.
And we didn't make any substantial arrests, but we we're looking at that if it pops up again, those same groups that we dealt with years ago.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh Mr. Commissioner, thank you uh for being. This evening, good evening. Um I had two quick things. One, um something that I've asked about in the past is for a button to be added to the Baltimore Police App to inform residents what Foxtrot helicopter is doing. Uh as you know, I'm a big proponent of this tool. Unfortunately, I think people are confusing Foxtrot with what we refer to as um airs or or better known as the spy plane. Um what are your thoughts on that and where do we stand with that request?
So I don't think any of us have any any objection to that. I think there is a a way to go about doing this. As a matter of fact, that was a conversation we had. Uh and and I'll let some of my my technology folks kind of come in and and give some thought to that.
Yes, sir. Um this Chief Davis, and thank you very much. Um so the, you know, placing placing something on the mobile app that we have is not something that we can do right now. The uh the technology is pretty old, and as a matter of fact, uh we are working to uh phase it out um in its current form, but we do have a replacement. And what we're doing is uh modernizing our website and making it fully mobile enabled. So uh the real need for this third-party app that is very difficult to maintain um is gonna be overcome with a, you know, very efficient, highly accessible uh website, again, that can be um accessed from a computer as well as a mobile app. And so we're looking into, you know, what is, you know, how do we place on the website, uh our new website, uh the ability to um to meet your your requests relating to uh Foxtrot. And so we're doing some research now, and uh I don't have an answer today, but we are looking into it.
I certainly appreciate that. Um second question, I guess it's a reminder of a comment. First, I want to thank the majors and captains in both the Central and the Southern, Major Daryl Gaines, Captain Jeff Featherstone, Major Byron Conaway, Captain Jason Callahan. All four of those individuals are absolutely outstanding um and are wonderful representatives for the department and the community. And I appreciate uh their responsiveness. Specifically, I wanted to hit on the District Action Team in the Central District. Um I think under Gaines and Featherstone's leadership, that was kind of propped up as a model um for all the other districts, if I'm not mistaken, in terms of how to deal with uh guns and narcotics. I I would just make a plea to you that uh that unit has been incredibly in fact effective. Uh it's brought relief to areas where we have not had relief in a really, really long time, including Juret Heights um and Seton Hill specifically. So anything that you can do to portion more resources uh to that function within the department, I think would be extremely helpful uh in dealing with just continued rampant drug dealing and violence uh in certain neighborhoods throughout the city. So I'll just leave that there. I don't need a response unless you want to give a response, but those folks are truly doing the Lord's work out there.
Well, thank you for the compliment. I will certainly pass your regards on uh uh to them. And and yes, we agree and and we agree uh about those issues in your districts and how effective they have been and will continue to be.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um I would like to ask a question. I uh read in the paper today that uh that 911 texting functionality is uh now available. Uh is that correct?
Uh 911 is, uh Chief Davis again, sir, uh 911 is managed by the city and not by BPD. Um so I I don't have any information about 911's ability to text, but I do know that um we have uh we have some internal capability that we just brought online that is really great, very effective, and it's working well.
So you're not aware that um the Mayor's Office rolled out uh texting to 911?
Count or Chairman, that's correct. Yeah, that that has been rolled out. Uh that has been rolled out, not to 911. We're aware of it.
You are aware.
This is uh this is Matt Segman from um the uh Mayor's Office. Uh I I believe that that functionality comes online tomorrow, but I guess the mayor did make an announcement about it today.
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, that would that would be good to uh make the Public Safety Committee and the Baltimore City Council aware of that so that they don't have to find that out from reading the paper. Um is there going to be any distribution, any uh PDF, any flyer, any information on when that is acceptable to utilize that functionality, when it's not? Um or are we just to guess?
Mr. Chairman, uh I believe if you take a look in your inbox later this evening, uh you will be pleased with what you find.
I look forward to seeing the information. All right, we'll move on to next round of questions. Um and keep in mind, we, there is a budget hearing with the same folks that are on this uh hearing uh next. So uh but I will go through one more time and see if anybody has any pressing questions for this hearing. Uh Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one other question. I know we talked a little bit about CopLogic a little earlier. And, and I agree, it's encouraging to see the increase in the usage of the online platform for reporting on various crimes. And, but when I look at it, it, the, the presentation talks about the total hours saved, about 2,900, and the total savings, about 97,000. But can you help me, and I guess give me a little bit more detail of how that translates into, you know, a higher performing department? Like are there increased arrests associated with it, increased patrols, response times decreasing? What are some other, what are, what are, what are the benefits? Because I know we are getting benefits. What are, what are the other, you know, metrics as it relates to the savings around CopLogic?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman. One of the savings, and you just mentioned one, is the ability to respond more quickly. If you're not tied up on a, a report run, an officer is free to respond to emergency, emergency calls much faster. We also have opportunities to do more business checks, more community engagement, and be able to be free and have that free time to do foot patrols and be engaged in the neighborhoods and do those types of activities. So that, you know, 2,900 hours saved translates into all those different activities that we can do more of, rather than being at someone's house taking a report for these crimes that we can do on the online reporting platform.
Yeah. And if going forward, if there's a way to kind of put a, a, a measurement to, to some of the things you just discussed, one, just for our benefit, so we can see, you know, the tangible results of the savings. But I think it also will, will help encourage, you know, citizens to utilize the online platform, you know, more because they, they get to see, you know, exactly how this is benefiting them in the community. And, and those factors that you just said, response times and, you know, arrest and, you know, increased supportive patrols. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see. If anybody else has another, we'll just do it like this. If there's any other members of the council or committee that have another question they'd like to ask before we move on to the budget hearing, please speak up. Going once, twice. All right. Thank you, everybody, for joining us for this hearing. We are now in recess.